Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, we're all set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening. Hello, everyone, welcome. We've got a really grateful house tonight. It is Wednesday, October 15th at 6:36. It's laws and rules. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Michelle Hirsch, Chair, Alderman Hirsch. We have Alderman Bob Dennison, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, Alderman Sarah Pasty, and Alderwoman Farrell Mickens on the committee. And sitting in with us as a special guest is Alderwoman Jeannie Edwards. So I'm just going to ask for everybody's cooperation and then hold down speaking. It's really hard to hear on the Zoom if there's cross talk. So that goes for us as well. All right, so the first item on the agenda is Kingston Point Wetland Restoration Seeker. I'm going to ask our Julie Noble to come to the table.
You ready? So what was the first one, Kingston Point? Kingston Point, okay. So this is a follow-up. So the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration Project is the North Street project, which is demoing the two houses and then putting it in. I came to you all a couple of months ago to start the secret process for that, the secret review process. At that time, we decided to do a coordinated review of the site. Since then, I sent out, and this body selected to choose to be lead agency, and that's what I agreed. So I sent out all the communications to the committees and involved agencies and comments. No one disagreed with the council being the agency. I did get a few comments on the environmental or on the seeker review. So I really updated the short environmental assessment form part one. There were two things that are different that I have updated. One of them is in study 12, where discussing the historic relevance of the site. And there was a question that states, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on New York State Historic Preservation Office, TRPO, archaeological site inventory? I had already said no, and once I heard back from the Department of Environmental Conservation, they said that yes, it is. So it has been changed to a yes. Okay. And the other change is the question that said, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? I have said no, and the answer to that is going to be a yes. However, it's a yes with an asterisk because we haven't finished the design. So the part that is in question, the demo of the two buildings is not in question. Once we demo the buildings, our intent is to build a pedestrian walkway of sorts out to the water. Whether we go and stop at the edge of the water and people just stand there and look may be different than if we go to the water's edge and create some sort of get at the water and paddle here. All of that still has to be designed. And if we go to that level of actually bringing the boardwalk to the water, then it would physically be touching the water. If we choose to not do that, it will not be touching the water. So to be conservative, I changed this to yes. Okay, all of that would need to be permitted. The reality is the tide change in that area is so strong that even like putting a kayak in there, you would have to be so timed out just right to like not get stuck and have to walk through the muck. Either way, the design hasn't been completed. It's only been conceptual design so far. So to be conservative, I changed that to a yes. So those are the two changes in the short form. It didn't end up changing any of the responses on the on the part two short environmental assessment form. So that remains the same. All that being said, all that being said, I would like to request that the council affirm itself as the lead agency and to acknowledge the changes in the part one and the non-changes in the part two and to render a determination of a negative environmental significance to the project. Of that seeker.
Any questions?
No, none of us know. We made a very thorough presentation the last time we did here.
Thank you. I'm just going to add some language that we affirm. And can you report that to?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we should revise.
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything. I read the revisions in the committee report currently.
No.
I feel like it would be formality ready to state it, but yeah. Just acknowledge that there were changes from the first time that it was presented, probably what's first. You could say after, sorry, finish my last suggestion.
After access project, I'm doing the short form as revised. I'm doing the short form as revised.
There, I was going to suggest after part that says after coordinated review, including an update to the short form part one.
That's fine, just do that.
Okay.
Do we have to include that it will be a negative declaration?
In the committee report, it says.
I'll read it. Okay.
Just one. Finish.
Okay, thank you. So the committee report reads, "A resolution that pursuant to 6 NYRCC Part 617, the City of Kingston Common Council hereby affirms and assumes its role as lead agency after a coordinated review, including the revised environmental short form of the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration and Public Access Project, an unlisted action under seeker, and that the project will have no potentially significant adverse environmental impacts and hereby renders a negative declaration in connection with this action."
Yeah.
Then you're missing the form one. You need to write that stuff.
Oh, we did. We did on top.
You said short environmental form or revised?
Envirmenteals.
But there should be environmental assessment for part two. So I didn't change part two, so you might want to specify it.
Okay.
We must.
Next, we got any motions?
Wait a second.
Two motions, a second. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. You're saying? All right, so next up is the Rhonda Creek Public Access Launch.
So this is the kayak launch to replace the previously deteriorated kayak launch on the Worth Street Bridge. This project has been going on for millennia because of the Worth Street Bridge project. Yeah, finalizing the design. It's going to be a smaller footprint than the original. It is ADA compliant. Going to be a smaller footprint than the original. It is ADA compliant as much as possible, considering we are on a title property. We work with a an ADA compliant, an ADA dock manufacturing firm that specializes in ADA. Okay. And so there will be an additional launch just for kayaks that is ADA compliant. And as much as possible, the entire system will be compliant except for at the extremes of the ties, which there's nothing we can do about. So the process right now is to finalize the seeker, and I would like to request that the council determines that this is a type two action under seeker and does not require the preparation of determination of significance. Because I think that this falls under the section of seeker and type two that states that is a replacement, including rehabilitation, floating construction, like structure of facility incoming on the same site. It's going to be made of different materials, but it's a small footprint, same exact spot, nothing touching the ground, still floating in the same location, not exchanging on the land. That same exact ten years are going to be essentially a repair.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Nope. All right. I'm going to read the committee report. A resolution that pursuant to six N Y C R R, part six one seven of the City of Kingston Common Council hereby determines that the Ronda Creek Public Access is a type two action under seeker and does not require a preparation of determinants of significance. Can I get a motion, please? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very much zero. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Sorry to all this kayak. All right. Next up, we have a conversation regarding construction noise. And I'm going to invite Michelle Elise up to the table for a couple of minutes to speak. I did send out, I forwarded an email from Michelle. I don't know if everybody's gotten a chance to look at it. It was like the end of day, so I actually have not finished, but if you want to come up and speak, thank you.
So when you write four pages, it'll be in your notes.
It just went in about an hour ago, so. Okay, yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. So as you read my testimony about what I've been dealing with, the construction noise over the past fourteen months. With that in mind, please consider the following four needs as you move forward with amending the noise ordinance. And I urge you all to please keep this issue on the agenda until there is a clear path forward and not table it. Number one, close loophole for the planning department to issue noise permits with abandon, provide a clearer definition of hardship, clarify the publishing requirements of permits, and make the process more transparent. Please audit the permits granted by the planning department to learn what their interpretation has been and how it can be less subjective. Number two, remove noise ordinance enforcement from the police department, at least during business hours. Having uniformed armed officers responding to nonviolent civil complaints is intimidating, wasteful, and inappropriate. It begs the question, why was this relegated to K P D in the first place? Why is it not the building safety department? Or considering the well-documented effects of noise pollution on public health and violent crime rates, maybe the Department of Health and Wellness would be appropriate. Number three, in the events that K P D does have to be the responding department for noise complaints after hours on weekends, create a system wherein the department, especially dispatch, knows the code or can quickly and easily reference them before giving citizens incorrect information and or refusing to enforce. The burden should not be on citizens to research and cite the ordinance, be discredited, persist, and cajole the enforcement to respond. The department should know that they own the decimal meters. They should know where to find them and how to use them. They should be measuring and documenting noise levels, and they should have a strong framework for responding appropriately in the moment and to meet justice. Number four, create meaningful restrictions for construction noise. It is utterly useless to have a noise ordinance at all if it will not be enforced when residents are really being harmed repeatedly and consistently for months or years by construction noise projects, construction project noise. This is the very definition of putting profits over people. Penalties for violations need to be turned and escalating rather than a minor cost of doing business. Noise mitigation needs to be addressed in the building for an application process. This may include sound barriers erected around the perimeter of a project and mandating the use of white noise backup alarms, which are mandated and employed elsewhere, including New York State D O T units. My daughter's a college student who noticed that despite living next to a new dorm construction project for all of last year, she was never bothered by construction noise. It is possible.
Thank you. So I just want to explain so that you understand, because we're not taking action tonight, we technically have to table it to come back next month.
As long as.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody here want to follow up on any of these items? I know, sorry, you're like.
I've done some research.
Okay. To the planning board.
Yeah, to the planning board, but also just to the city because of the constituent in my board.
Okay.
I investigated that, and I think you have some.
Yeah, so I've been talking to Sue Cahill repeatedly about the issue of granting a hardship. It's almost like a waiver to the contractor, developer, which in her response, she has said that, because I'm asking for a determination of exactly what would constitute a hardship. And she came back with, well, we don't have that point here. I'm looking for her exact language here, but I think that that would be a good place to start to get and, you know, to get a sort of listing of those instances that would constitute a hardship and those exact circumstances. It can't be that, you know, there is a profit, you know, some, some construction finish date that needs to happen in their process to say hardship on the part of the developer. I think a hardship ought to be something else. What that something else looks like, I'm not exactly sure yet. But it certainly can't be weather related necessarily, because that you have to factor in as a developer. It has to be something hard and fast, something that that we can all agree. That's and I think what happens is we are going as a city to be faced with this on a number of different, at a number of different times because of all the construction that is in the pipeline. And so I think we really need to get this under control at this point and put in writing if we need to change the ordinance to reflect, you know, more stringent guidelines for when a hardship waiver will be granted, then I think we need to.
Okay. I would imagine there's some kind of legal language that constitutes a hardship, especially if it's going through the planning board, so.
Except that she has not referenced.
Okay.
So people look into that.
Do you want to follow up on that piece, please? Okay.
Yeah, and I can work with you because there are other issues that came up in terms of construction going on in residential neighborhoods that was not necessarily commercial construction, but homeowner construction in which commercial vendors or commercial contractors were hired, and they were using commercial tools on weekends. I don't think domestic tools are allowed. So we need to look at what constitutes a designation of domestic tool. And I did a little research and found out that some cities had defined what can and can't be used. Okay. You know, and so it would be, you know, I think there's just more research to be done.
Right.
To see what other cities have done in similar sort of samples.
I do agree also with about enforcement and follow up and, you know, whose job that is. Lessening that burden on our police department, so.
But I understand when business hours, you know, when it's not business hours, certainly on weekends and evenings, if there's noise, the police need to respond, right, as there are many staff.
I had a question for Jeannie, just because I know you can't speak for him, but on weekends, if issues have come up in the past that are building department, you guys just deal with it online? Okay.
But you and I can work together.
Sure.
Okay, so you can put us on this.
Thank you. All right, anybody? What?
The noise liaison.
That's right.
All right, anyone else want to add anything? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Fourth item President Shaw had put on here. She is not in attendance tonight, so we will take all this. It was going to begin work to look at different parts of our code and start examining outdated pieces of the code and identifying them so that they be updated. All right. So first, under Blue Stone Old Business, we have twenty-one Blue Stone Courts. And I would like to invite both up to the table and just introduce yourselves.
Sure. I'm going to try and say. I can hear orders. I'm just starting to say, Ziva, how's everybody?
That's my favorite person.
You're doing great. So apologies, we missed the last meeting. We were not aware. I didn't check the agenda, so.
Okay.
We blanked on that, so apologies. Thank you for table. So we originally submitted our, our letter for consideration with the not identifying areas that would be dedicated to the city, basically the street or utilities, and the other areas that would be managed by the HOA. We also received some comments from the city engineer, John Sholtes. So we have responses to those that we can send formally, but if you'd like to go through those, we can go through those.
Okay. All right. So why don't, so I know that this is, you know, project's gone through the planning board.
Yeah.
So we are sort of, you know, like, except for Sarah, who's, that's her ward, and she is the liaison. We would love for you to just give us a little background and
Okay.
tell us what's going on.
Sure, yeah. So we're in planning review right now. We've moved, this project has taken a few different turns since inception. So originally it was approved for a multifamily apartment complex. We abandoned that approval, went back to the drawing board, and have now submitted under the revised Form B's Code, a walkable neighborhood plan. So I think it's probably been about a year that we've been going through planning review, making revisions and addressing comments from various. So it basically is taking this lot off of Blue Stone Court, developing that into a subdivision of about fifteen lots with different type housing, whether it be duplex, small multiplex, that sort of thing, suddenly leading in HOA managed, retention pond, stormwater, that sort of thing. And then the lot that, part of the lot that goes up to Lucas Avenue also managed by the HOA. So these are per the Form B's Code, housing types that are very different than the originally approved project of these large apartment complex buildings.
Okay, so then the step is dedicating the public street, the public streets?
Yes, the public street and the utilities.
And where are you in this phase then with the engineer, the city engineer?
So we are currently working on revision to the plans based on his last round of comments.
Okay.
In regard to what's in planning review right now. He also made comments on this specific, under this specific matter, Common Council regarding this dedication by email. So that's what we have prepared responses to. Essentially, we can issue this formally by email. Essentially, we don't have taken any extension to anything that he said. The no parking signs during snow emergency, those will be reflected on the plan. The design and construction of the street utilities, a lot of that was in the last couple of rounds of his comments that our engineer just didn't hear us revising. There was two comments around performance bond, we understand and know that would be necessary. And then his last comment was in regard to the track and land that goes out to Lucas, which in the originally submitted map, we did not show as part of the HOA. So we're revising this to now include that per John's recommendation.
Is that this piece?
Exactly. Yep.
Back to us to Lucas Avenue. Then Lucas Avenue has a sidewalk up to that, you know, connected in towards their sidewalk.
Is there a sidewalk now? No.
No, it stops at.
There was no sidewalk.
It stops at Forside Park.
Okay, yeah.
But there was ever a side.
Sometime in the distant future.
Yeah.
Has it discussed at all that you guys put in a sidewalk or?
Not really. I think the first round, the first round, when we went for the apartment complex, there was discussion about maybe with the city to extend sidewalks from Forside, but that wasn't.
And then when you're saying utilities, you're talking sewer, water?
Sewer, water, utilities that are in the, that are going to be in the street. Stormwater excluded from that.
Okay. And what's the stormwater thing, separate?
That's going to be managed by the HOA. It's all, it's onsite, there's retention pond area, there's some drainage structures and things like that.
Questions?
Well, we're not going to, city won't accept this until it's constructed. Yep, understood. So assuming that you're satisfying John and Ed's comments, I would encourage you to continue to do so.
Yeah, and I would like to have their, their comments as well, because again, I don't know. Well, if this has been done before, again, you know, I don't have any experience with cities accepting, you know, sort of utilities in a street from a subdivision into, you know, city property. And I just want to make sure that it's all, you know.
I believe Blue Stone Court is.
It's the same thing. So this is a continuation of Blue Stone.
Yeah.
Of Blue Stone Court.
Yeah, Blue Stone Court is City Road.
Right, but the homeowners association. So I think that's where my question comes in is how does the homeowners association and their maintenance of it differ from Rose Stone Court? Because it's a different configuration. It's not a standard.
The Blue Stone Court has the stormwater route that the city is supposed to be responsible for, but they are not. They're not cleaning it. So that's what triggered this.
Yeah, this is like a lesson learned in that. So what we're doing, what we're saying is the city take the street and then do its normal thing with that, but the stormwater, that was going to say that the city something didn't want to make again.
I see.
We're taking the stormwater, put it in the HOA, make the progress. So we're saying, agreed. That's what we'll do and that's going to be. Wire.
Okay. I think we just need to have a conversation with our engineer also.
Engineer and then.
Yeah.
Satisfying. Let's construct. We're not going to accept it until it's constructed.
Right, I understand that.
Of course. Yeah, we suggested that we bring this here to, to this group.
Got to go. Yeah. Yeah. And I'm sure there's legal papers or we're.
All the stuff that has to happen.
Maybe any legal papers.
We still have to inform the HOA in a little planning.
Yeah, I mean, we weren't planning on anything, yeah, approving anything this evening, but it's been, how far out are you on? Construction and?
It's, it's really dependent on the approval. We've gone through several rounds of comments, where right now it's, it's in our court to make some revisions for John's latest comments. And we're hoping to be on the agenda for the little February meeting. So it's hard to pin down a timeline.
Agenda for which?
Clinton.
Okay.
It's just figured out it's good that you're doing this now so that John and these guys can look at it as it's being constructed and make sure that it's consistent. Yeah.
Right, it's on site, we're seeing it.
Yes.
So it um, do you have an offering claim? For the homeowners association?
Uh, we have not. Done that, drafted that yet. Um, because essentially this is still still pliable, there's still things that might change in terms of the actual property lines, where things are. One of the, you know, being dependent on John's comments of, okay, now we're gonna include this area. So until we can really lock that in, and then can start to actually. You know, uh establish the deeds for those properties, and we have all the meets and bounds and that kind of thing, we can't really, we don't have the detail.
But um, so the homeowners association will be expected to manage all the common areas.
Yes.
Okay.
It's basically maintenance, and we'll prescribe the maintenance.
Right, and there'll be maintenance fees attached to all of that, right? Um, at what point? Does the homeowners association like have, um, if there are fifteen units, at what point does the homeowners association become responsible to manage all the common areas? Is it? The majority of sales have been completed? Is it one person has boarded and they constitute the homeowners?
It's pretty much because.
It's immediate.
Yeah, like if, in other words, once these are developed, once these are are. Developed and once these are created, we'll essentially for a brief period of time own all of them.
Right.
Until you start, so so we're gonna be funding that a hundred percent. And then as we sell off, they'll be funded, but whoever's only so responsible for the portion of funding in HOA.
Okay, so the manager, the manager will step away in proportion to the number of units sold.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, well, thank you for coming this evening, and uh we look forward to receiving the.
Yeah, we'll send you a formal uh response to John's comments.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks very much.
Alright, next up, we're going to um skip over number two on Old Business for right now and go to parking trucks. It's updating some uh code, um.
It's mysterious, things.
So I know, uh, Andrew was gonna invite um Ed and John, but I don't.
How are you?
Thank you for all your photography. Alright. So we're looking at uh mending some language, updating language in our zoning code of parking of trucks. Uh, under chapter three seventy-six, the city regulates parking of trucks by their weight. A truck is considered any vehicle with a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded. Any vehicle with three or more axles or any unit of a tractor trailer. And such trucks shall not be parked on any city, street, highway, or roadway between the hours of eight P M and seven A M. In any residential area. So we were going to just be changing what the residential areas were to conform with our new code. But then under chapter three ninety, article nine, the city regulates the parking of trucks by their length. You know, bus, truck, tractor, or trailer, tractor trailer combination in excess of twenty-five feet in length shall be parked on any street or highway of the city. So we have to come to a conclusion of what definition we're going to use. And so we thought, since. Mister Perry deals with parking issues, they happen, come and speak with us.
I would, well, thank you for having me here. I think that doing it by weight and axle um would be more appropriate than length. Um. Because those twenty-five foot vehicles most likely are going to have three axles on them. Um, but you can kind of make it both. End with making one law that's not as. Make it a lot clearer.
Okay. Alright, I'm just saying.
I think the question that we had is.
Yeah.
I think the question that we had at a previous meeting was, we're talking about a weight, a weight of ten thousand pounds, how do we measure? How is that weight measured to tell whether a truck is ten thousand pounds when you see it parked down the street?
Honestly, Google.
Oh, right, because they have, they have pictures of trucks that you could standard weights for trucks.
So we take the registration to tell us what year, make and model of the vehicle.
Okay. Thank you for that, I didn't know.
It's this modern day.
Yeah, no, Google, yeah, it's a modern, yes.
Um, should we put the word empty or the word weight? So that it's clear that it's the weight of the vehicle itself, not any cargo we're trying to carry.
Cause how do we know?
Well, because that's, I just want to make it clear that whenever it is that Mister Google says it's the weight, that somebody doesn't come back and say. Oh, it was, you know, I didn't have any stuff in it, so how do you know what the weight was, or whatever, just.
Well, the the Google is gonna tell us what the weight is unloaded.
I'm like.
Right, we're not gonna know.
Right, and that's, that's good for us, but I'm saying people are reading the law. I'm just thinking about how somebody might try to interpret it and try to like appeal or whatever, so I just wanted to be as clear as possible.
Okay.
For them.
Now, will it make any difference to the roadways if somebody has ten thousand pounds in the truck? In terms of, it doesn't matter, we're just talking about size and the space that it's talking about, right?
Yeah, this is not, you're not thinking of weight though.
We're not, we're not, it's only like a bridge. It's only a bridge, exactly, that's what I was getting at, yes.
Anyone else have? Any other questions or?
Right, that hurts to hear, just how, how often do you see large vehicles like this parked? Probably in certain parts of town in New York, every day?
Yeah. Yeah, I took some photos of some.
I saw a driver, that is.
That was just like in an hour.
Really?
Yeah, like one hour, like six o'clock in the morning when I, when I receive this, the next morning I just went out. Trying to hit all sections of it, there, there in every section of the city, um, always.
Okay.
And heavy truck and the sewer system gets.
Well, exactly, that's.
And well, right. And so our infrastructures.
Yeah, over time it just impacts. Yeah.
Goes down into the sand or it squishes the pipes.
Alright, so I think that we've only been given um chapter three seventy-six. But we can add, um.
And that's, that's where it has the definition of the truck.
Yeah, this is where the definition, the definition is correct.
Yes.
And then we are um in under residential area, we're taking out our, our, our one, our, you know, right, or the old zoning code, replacing it with our transect. Um, numbers, letters. And then we're adding a language, no truck shall be parked on any city, street, highway, or roadway between the hours of eight P M and seven A M in any residential area. No refrigerated truck or trailer shall be parked within the city uh between the hours of eight P M and seven A M with a refrigeration unit in operation.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That is it.
Alright, I thought that um. Yes, but that some um, some part of our concern was um the length of the truck. Um, so I would be in favor of excerpt, excerpting in excess of twenty-five feet in length. Shall be parked on any street or highway in the city. And and sort of insert that in after ten thousand pounds unloaded. And twenty-five.
Can you tell me where you're reading that from, please?
No, where she's just looking at the letter, I'm looking at the letter, the original, this letter. Yes, it's two separate chapters, so under chapter three ninety, articles six. Four, I'm sorry, three four.
Three seven.
Three seventy.
We're, we're, we have copy in three seventy-six.
Yes, okay, so under chapter three ninety, which apparently you don't have a copy of.
Right, we're not gonna do that tonight, we're gonna bring that back next month.
Oh, okay, but what you're, is it, what I'm suggesting is that we excerpt this in excess of twenty-five feet in length. And that to any vehicle with a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded and in excess of twenty-five feet in length. So you're combining the, I'm just.
Or suggest that.
One, right, one portion, so that we, because that, that was a major concern, that they were these elongated um. Structures that take, that take up a lot of space and also um interfere with, you know, the view. View layers.
And you're still continuing any vehicle, after that, any vehicle with four axles.
I can't.
You're still continuing after.
Yeah. But basically it would just be combined, and so each chapter would be identical. In saying that, you know, a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded, any vehicle with three or more axles or any unit of a tractor trailer.
And I've been just saying. Three ninety and three seventy-six and kind of.
Just putting them together.
This is what.
I thought you said that the definition of three ninety covers the twenty-five feet.
Yeah, the three axle, well, like twenty-five feet is tall. That's.
What's the, the three axles would automatically cover twenty-five feet?
Most likely, most likely, or the ten thousand pound thing, twenty-five foot, you're looking at like a flatbed, we could like. Something that we would see about like, like an R V, like a massive R V might be like twenty-eight feet, but we would be covered under the ten thousand.
Oh, because it would be ten thousand. Okay, will shall not be parked on these. Okay, so this has a.
Yeah, it's like either or or a both and whatever, it's like it's not, six oh one a half dozen.
Well, I'm reading in the first one, chap, under chapter three seventy-six, that it's a prohibition of parking between eight A M and seven P M. Under chapter three ninety, you are prohibited. From parking on any city street.
Except for with permission from like the police department for three hours in front of your own president.
Right, so it's a question of timing too, is what you're referring to, Tara.
I think you.
Yeah.
Twenty-five. Then in the uh flatbed, you mentioned flatbeds.
Mm-hmm.
Flatbed, you weigh ten thousand pounds.
Mm-hmm. But I understand what you'll say, right, that one is that one prohibits any parking on any street, the other is just parking during those hours, between those hours.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess that's the question, what I'm considering, you want to prohibit parking anytime or just during those hours?
Are you done?
Well, that's what, right. That's what chapter three ninety says. Anytime would be rough. Yeah, so that would be really rough, so we wanna change three ninety so that it's, it doesn't say anytime, it's during those hours.
Unless you want a lot of phone calls.
Right. Or or you, we'd say would go to you though, right?
What's the length of a striped parking spot?
Eighteen feet is a parking stall.
Okay. Alright, so is the consensus for just when you leave it at? Any vehicle with a weight of ten thousand pounds unloaded, any vehicle with three or more axles or any unit of tractor trailer, because that will encompass twenty-five feet.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I think that's your best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
I'll take your advice.
Wonderful, you got the. Good to see you all.
And not give us fifth down.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. And thank you for the work that you undertake.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, so. Since everything is staying the same as what's written on the papers that we have for three seventy-six, I'm just gonna read a resolution. Of the Common Council amending chapter three seventy-six as attached. Is there a motion? Five, seven, second.
Second.
Yes, any discussion?
Me too.
This is, alright. Say it's the. Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright, now we are going to go to, um, so I haven't received anything yet for the science standards from Old Business Four. Um, we will then move on to the burn ban. Um, we have fire chief right here. Speak about uh how the city responds um during. Critical times, burn bans and. Please, one up. So um, I shared with the chief um the presentation that we had, and you know, he had sent us. What rules we follow within the city of Kingston, and so I feel free to, you know, elaborate a bit more and how we get that word out to the community and.
Uh, the rules that we follow in the city of Kingston come from either D E C. From the state or the uh, the local law. So pretty much D E C regulates the uh. The fires that you can have in population of two, twenty thousand or less or over twenty thousand. And city of Kingston is over twenty thousand. So really, the only thing city of Kingston can burn is in enclosed, closed uh containers up to four foot diameter. The human burn version would, can have underneath garbage, anything like that. Um, has to be occupied, you know, people have to have, observe it at all times. And it's um. The majority of the, the, the burning D E C is people that have um fires that they have dry wood. Which is best way to burn, less smoke. Alright, and you can't burn, like I said, any of the twigs or anything like that, cuts part of a tree or brush or anything like that. Not allowed to do that, and the city don't have that law.
Oh.
Always, doesn't matter. So that, that comes into, a lot of people mistake, and I said, the uh below to uh twenty thousand population, where you can burn brush, you burn brush files, you can burn, you know, cut, trim trees down, burn tree, trim something like that. You know, can do that.
Okay.
So uh, we do have a local law about, it's called nuisance smoke, that if someone does have a campfire going or cooking fire, and it's creating. A nuisance smoke to the neighbor, then they can call the uh fire department, police department. And we would want to come out and determine uh whether that's a nuisance smoke or not. Um, there's, there's rule that you gotta set up as far as how far it's gotta be away from the property line, how far it's gotta be away from a combustible building. Though those rules are all strictly enforced, you know, when we go out, we check, check different areas. But. Someone calls and says that my neighbor's burning brush, that's immediate. He can do. Um, so those are dependent rules that we follow. And um, we. We have, you know, an excellent, the public is excellent about it. Uh, we don't have any problems that, if you're causing nuisance smoke, you know, somebody's burning wet wood or something like that, and a smoke's sitting down low or something like that, and we even get us a nuisance, then we shut it down. And so the uh, the occupant will either be allowed to put it out, or we will put it out for them. But.
Yeah.
Bring in the helicopter.
Yeah, yeah, so that's pretty much, so the burn ban, when Iran will say, well, the burn bans are on everything. You read the burn ban, there's always down toward the bottom where it is, the exception is that as long as it's contained, and it's less than four foot diameter, less than three foot high, flames less than three foot high. Then it's allowed. So. You know, even all through, all through this previous burn ban that was going on there, New York State was very good at putting out there that, the situation that you still have campfire, it's contained. Less than three foot high, less than four foot diameter, and you're out observing it at all times. It's gonna have that. And so.
What are the, um, the rules on the books for, um. The property line distance and building distance?
Twenty-five foot from the property, twenty-five foot from the, from the outdoors.
So no one should have a gas grill or charcoal grill?
Uh, yeah, yes, you can empty a gas grill, that's, everybody has an open, their, uh, their, uh. The patios or something like that. Right, it's the, the open fire, everything, really, the gas grill, you can close it, say, it'll, it'll close right down on it. So in really as far as it goes, you, you can do a gas grill, you can do charcoal, or you can do virgin wood. That's it, you don't do anything else.
And do we? Have we had homes catch on fire because of?
No.
Any of these?
No. But it's, you know, you, you watch the news and you think of, uh, the gas grill that is out there. You gotta bring it to, uh, respect as far as the city of Kingston, it's only three by three. We have three firehouses. We hear twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. You call us, we're on top of it. That's how we. You know, that's how the fire park's been since the. Since you know the fire, fire department. So there's quick action on it, but also we go out, again, people will call, this week we see them. You know, my neighbor's burning. Move out and look. We'll send somebody else, send an agent out, send the chief out, remember, send them out, take a look at it. And you mean, we'll respond to anything that they call on, we'll respond, check it out. So there's nothing, just, you know, it will fall and say, well, how big is it, where is it, okay, here, there, there, we go.
They don't know.
We go.
And how many brush fires, I know there was one at one time in Ward nine, you know, done by Wilbur, like, do? Anything that gets?
Nonetheless. It's considerable for our city, for our city that we had, and it was, it was this time of year, we used on the ground, driving, driving, and so forth, it was down by God course. You know, but it wasn't also, it was a watershed in the city of Kingston through the reservoir. But, um, it was contained, it was contained.
Okay.
It's. Now, that's one thing about Kingston is that we can pretty much drive up to any fire that there is. You don't even go out and look for it.
Right.
Anybody have any other? Questions? You have, you have to stand up first.
Are you familiar with the proposal, burn ban proposal here, to give the mayor the power to? Do. Basically outlaw fires under certain conditions?
Alright, that is, then, um. There are other agencies out there, we can't get through that, I'm not. Right, quite sure of what, I didn't read it.
But I mean, would that be a problem? Do you see any problem with that, with the mayor having that power?
No, I don't see a problem with him having a power. You know, I hope they, for me, flexed it.
Sure.
Well, we would have to, if we were gonna write something, it would be. Right, like put in something in our code, that would be hard given.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and I think one of the things that came up in some of our discussions had to do with, you know, the high risk fire times. You know, when the state has declared a burn ban because there's a high risk. And some communities opted into it, perhaps the city hasn't, so the question is, should, really, should we be able to, to do that? Um, if those high fire times arise and how of, actually how often, I guess that was another question, how often are the? Are there high risk where you can't tell, it just depends on the year?
It depends on the year, in the last few years we've had in the same, at the same timeframe, has, you know, divisional one in the fall. There's always in springs, it's always there, that's there, it's on the calendar.
Right.
But again, still can burn, they're three by four.
That's contained.
You know, and supervised. The key here, a lot of it is supervised. You know, the mayor, if, that's it, if the, the neighbor calls, tells us, we don't see anybody on the backyard with them.
Yeah.
We respond, that would get, they call three response, I mean, like the sign response, the other response would have been just unquiet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or if you tell them that there's nobody back there. Supervising it.
Yeah.
Then we pick up our pace. And by the end, it was just, you know, it's, it's night and time for it to get something and come back out and something like that, be, you know. Be called, be official. Say.
How often does that happen?
Not very often, not very often, people have been very, they, they calls, can I have a fire? Can I have a fire? No, send me an email, can I have a fire? And, you know, this time or that time, and he's, he's giving, he's giving the twenty-five line on the building. Three by four, you know, contained and you stay outside. They would supervise, or somebody, an adult. They're outside.
Right, there we go.
Responsible adult?
You can say what?
Well, Terrell, it's okay, you can do your deep fried turkey.
Sure, we'd get a fire, but yeah.
My neighbor did that.
The partner was there.
Oh, why is that, he did it on the deck. And he didn't throw the turkey, ordering grease, and then that's in one call, it's, yes.
He's an insurance agent.
Alright, is that what we should, I am on the turkey, deep fried turkey?
That's, it's the worst word. And there's just.
The instructions are on the box.
But if they're out, you see out in the public, and you, you see a commercial McDonald's, they just throw frozen fries into a deep fryer. You know, they get a little spicy when I'm doing this, but they, they have no idea how much waste there is in there. In a confined area, and it's on a deck, meaning it's on combustible.
Yeah.
It's not, they, it wouldn't.
Sounds horrible.
Yeah, so.
Not responsible.
None. Alright. Anybody else?
So we, we don't know how many times a year, days a year. This one, if we choose to go that direction.
Right.
How many days a year? We love.
Okay, so. What, and, and you're right, I'm, I'm not talking for the mayor. Very, very minimal.
Yeah.
Because in D E C, he still puts it out there.
Right.
That as long as you follow these. Then we're good. That's, that's very thing, the, uh, they can come this, you know, D E C's recommended, the recommendation. And maybe something that's just mixed until maybe the weight maybe too much.
Oh, maybe.
Something like that, something. Something along those lines, you know, but.
We have that period these, in March, right, that's yearly in March to me, yeah.
Every year they have that, right?
It's good to know, I mean, uh, uh, please that we have a conference, fire department, they great comfort in that.
Thank you too.
They do a great job.
Thank you.
Alright, so.
We can still think about it, or?
Yeah, so, um, the gentleman presented to us from Bard, he's, uh, foiled the state just to get the information on how many days that occurred, you know, in the last year.
Hmm.
I'll take it from there, and I've, you know, heard from some community members that they would like to have some input, so. Listening especially tonight or something. So they can wait, yeah, I mean, oh, yeah.
So.
Alright, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you, glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so next up, uh, we're gonna go to, um, this resolution that was tabled. Last month, a memorializing resolution, um. Opposing the harmful, no, that's not it, they're harmful.
Some of these are.
Yeah, the only one, um.
The draw one.
No, no, the, uh, pipeline.
Oh, the pipeline.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not attached in the nervous business, but, um, we have Melissa Hoffman. From Food and Water Watch. Here. Alyssa is Melissa Hoffman.
Yeah, she's here, she's also, I'm gonna screen her.
Um. Alright, so I don't think this got attached to the packet.
Cause it would have been in last month.
Yeah.
I, I have it in my packet, Michelle, you don't have it as number two? In your old, under old business?
I'm bringing this, I'm bringing you one, me.
And you want that in my things?
I like that.
Because I think.
It looks like there's, there's two.
Yes, words.
Two, um, copies of, um, the beautiful. Alright, let me just. Melissa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hi, nice to see you.
Hi. Are, am I? Are we good, I can do some, ex, explain a little bit about the resolution?
Yeah, while you're speaking, I'm gonna go in and just resend everyone the resolution. But, again, thank you.
Of course, um, thank you for taking some time to let me, um, speak to you all, my name's Melissa, I'm an organizer. With Food and Water Watch, um, and we have been working to pass, or stop the expansion of fracked gas pipelines in New York. I have a slideshow with a few slides, just to kind of go over like what we're looking at with the pipelines is. Are you able to see this, I don't know how your room is set up. Are we good?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, so we're trying to stop the expansion of fracked gas pipelines in New York because. The, about to face a climate crisis from worsening is to stop the problem, um, and we need to stop expanding. What is causing the climate crisis, which one example is fracked gas pipelines and facing. Three potential build outs of fracked pipeline infrastructure in New York. So why do we need to stop them, because? Gas pipelines, they create water and air pollution. It's dangerous, can cause accidents, explosions and leaks. Also, to build the pipeline destroys land, farms, forests, and sometimes takes people's property. Worsens climate change and promotes fracking, something that we banned in New York State, but we still allow these pipelines to push through New York. And it also maintains our reliance on fossil fuels in an era where it is so, so important for us to move off as rapidly as possible. And the state knows this, that's why the state passed a really, um, strong climate law that mandates we reduce greenhouse gas emissions rapidly. Um, and so this is already a priority for the state to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, reduce fossil fuels. Um, and the state, state needs to now hold on and commit to that law and stop expanding fracked gas pipelines. So the first one that we are opposing is the expansion of Enbridge's Algonquin Pipeline. Um, and just a note, I wanted to mention that last year around the fall. Um, I think it was last year, Kingston passed a resolution opposing the expansion of the Iroquois Pipeline. And that would run through, that runs through Duchess County, and the expansion would. Um, increase the capacity at existing compressor stations in Duchess and Columbia County along the pipeline route. Causing increased air emissions and also exacerbating climate change. And unfortunately, the governor actually approved the expansion of this pipeline earlier this year in February, which is, um. Really devastating because the state had a really strong track record of actually not approving any pipeline expansions in like. Basically almost like, almost ten years, um, so it was a shock to hear this, especially as right now federally we're facing a lot of. Cuts to our environmental protections and water regulations. Um, so this is an issue that the state really needs to prioritize and stop backsliding on. Um. So this pipeline, it runs through Rockland and Westchester County and what's, um. Really unique about this one is that it runs underneath the Hudson River, right near the Indian Point decommissioned nuclear facility. And if there's increased pressure near that, near that facility, there can lead to, um, potential explosions. Or a dangerous situation at that site because of how close the pipeline is to the facility and how much pressure and heat. Um, are exchanged in when the pipeline is so close to the decommissioned, um, spent and spent nuclear. Rods, um, so this pipeline. Uh, there is no active application with the state, we are fighting this early on, um. And that we hear that Enbridge, Enbridge put out a proposal. For expanding this pipeline and increasing capacity at, um, compressor stations along the route. And we heard that they are making deals with states in the Northeast, um. To accept the gas, so they do have financial backing for this project and it's only a matter of time before they apply for permits in New York. The next pipeline, the Constitution Pipeline, this isn't, um, there is an application in with the state. Um, but it's part of this deal that Trump seems to be making with Governor Hochul. Um, where he wants to build new pipelines that the state has actually already denied water quality permits for years ago. This one was denied back in twenty sixteen, but Trump is trying to revamp it. Um, and this one would run through, um, more upstate New York, um, a little bit past Albany from Pennsylvania. And through Albany and it would connect to the Iroquois Pipeline. Um, and then the Williams Nessie Pipeline, that's the current, um, most urgent threat we're facing in New York. Because there is an active application with the state and they already did a public comment period, it's just a matter of time before the state decides to make a decision. On the pipeline. Um, and this one was denied multiple times for not being able to meet state water quality standards. It would be built in the New York Harbor, off the coast of New York City, destroy New York beaches, churn up, um, lots of chemicals that are in. Underneath the water in the New York Harbor. Um, and increase air pollution in an area that's already facing a lot of, um, environmental injustices. So those are the three pipelines, um. And are, we need to stop them because we need to make sure that New York protects. Our residents, um, from pollution threats and from the climate crisis. So we know that pipeline companies need to get permits in order to start beginning construction on these pipelines. The governor has the authority to actually stop these pipelines and she can direct state agencies like the D E C. To deny permits for the pipelines and that's why we. Believe it's really urgent to pass a resolution calling on Governor Hochul. To deny these permits and making sure that Governor Hochul knows that it's her. Um, within her power, um, and it's something New Yorkers want across the state. Um, and that she should, she should do, she should direct her agencies to stop these pipelines. Um. This is an example of a recent action we did, we had Lieutenant Governor join us and a lot of other elected officials, this was in New York City. Um. And we've had, we have a growing movement of municipalities across. Westchester, Rockland County, um, and Hudson Valley. Passing resolutions against the pipelines, we had Rockland County and eleven other municipalities pass resolutions. Opposition is growing and will continue to, we had a hundred and thirty elected officials. Send a letter to Governor Hochul in past August, we've done marches across the state. And soon we're releasing a letter with ten Congress members. From the New York City area, sending, telling Governor Hochul to stop the Williams Pipeline. And we've also had a lot of support from elected officials from just even the city council level, all the way up to. The lieutenant governor, um, so that really indicates that. People all across the state understand the severity of the climate crisis and the urgency. Um. In taking action, um, and making sure that we don't expand fracked gas pipelines. And I think that's it, I can go into a little more details or answers. And I think that's it. I can go into a little more details or answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. I think we'll take questions. I just had one because your photo was over one of the slides, and it was the Williams Pipeline was denied in 2019. And what other date year?
2019 and 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. So I had a question about the same pipeline. According to the illustration, it says there's an existing pipeline. So would this replace that pipeline or would this be in addition?
A new one.
It would be a new one, but the other one would still stay there.
Yes.
I see. Yeah, that's my question. So both of them would be functioning.
Yes, they want to add capacity. And this pipeline, they want, it's going to be transporting more gas into New York in addition to the existing one.
I see. And it's following a different pattern because it just, is that just because of the geology that happens to be in that area?
I believe so. I am not entirely knowledgeable about the exact pathway the pipeline is taking. I just know it's going to be majority underneath underwater.
Okay, thank you.
You're saying fracked gas pipelines. Is it your position that all of the gas in these pipelines is from fracking?
Yes, most of the gas that enters the pipeline is going to be from fracking, coming in from Pennsylvania or entering from a port in New Jersey. And these are, as proposed, going to be carrying fracked gas. Anyone else? Questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering, have you approached Ulster County? I see you have one other county, Rockland County. But have you approached Ulster?
We have not yet. I would love to talk with Ulster County about this. But I haven't yet. That's definitely.
Yeah, I see that Ulster County legislators signed the letter, listed. County Executive Metzger signed the elected official.
But they didn't issue a memorializing resolution is what we're being asked to.
Yes. I already had a relationship with Food and Water Watch, so and worked on the letter, the state letter with another organization that I'm a part of, so. So I had the relationship, so I brought it forward.
But no, I, yeah. I understand that I'm just, it would seem to me that it would mean that much more were more counties to issue a memorializing resolution.
Oh, and actually that lets me to ask whether Westchester, whether you would post Westchester since it looks like one of the pipelines will be running through Westchester?
Yes, we are working right now with Westchester, the Westchester Legislature on a resolution. We've had a lot of, a lot of Westchester legislators are on that letter as well and have shown up to events. And so I think we should soon have a resolution from them as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Melissa.
Of course.
Yeah. And so our, our resolution, as I explained to everybody, went to our Conservation Advisory Council, and they edited it and added some specific Kingston language.
And will that be coming back to us then?
No, it's already, we have it already. They already did it before I introduced it. Yeah, so I just resend that to everyone. I think the mayor signed the letter as well, then the mayor, speaking of both. Melissa, I thought he signed it.
I might have to check on that. I don't see his name.
So we're calling, so this resolution is just calling on the and the governor to, you know, deny any permits. Yeah, I'm just, hold on.
It's not by itself, but she says it's within the September 2025 laws.
Yeah, it's in item number two package.
And Michelle just said.
Yes, it wasn't in tonight's packet, so I've just resent last month's packet, and it's item number two. So one of the, whereas is that the CAC put in is Kingston is considered a disadvantaged community under the New York Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which is mandated to receive 35% of overall benefits of spending on clean energy and energy efficiency programs, projects, or investments with the goal of achieving 40% fossil fuel districts from these goals. So now therefore be it resolved, the City of Kingston, in the interest of protecting its residents from water and air pollution urges Governor Hochul to oppose the Algonquin Pipeline Expansion, dubbed Project Maple, the Constitution Pipeline, the E S E Pipeline, and any other fossil fuel expansion. And further resolve that Governor Hochul direct for agencies to deny any permits for the. And then further send this, the city clerk to send out to electeds. Anybody have questions about the resolution or? All right, so I'm just gonna, this will be a resolution of the common council of the City of Kingston, New York, opposing the harmful impacts. A memorializing resolution of the common council of the City of Kingston imposing frac gas pipeline expansion in New York, including Enbridge, Algonquin Pipeline Expansion, Maple Project, and newer previously defeated pipelines, including the Williams Constitution Pipeline and Northeast Supply Enhancement Pipeline in New York. They get it motion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
I can talk about why I oppose if you like. One is that transportation of natural gas through pipelines is the safest way to move it. Better than trains, which we have in the city already. It's better than trucks, better than tigers. It's a safe way. I'm not convinced it's all frack gas. I think that gas is a transitional fuel. I think it's necessary to continue its use. So I'm not opposed to their endeavors.
Sounds just okay. All right.
But it would be opposed if they were putting a truck it through.
I'm not happy about trucks or trains.
I understand.
And which of them have something that's scary? I guess it's safer, safer, the safest probably way to move this stuff.
Melissa, do you guys, have you done anything about the CSX trains or any kind of, you know, these trains that come through the city with lots of, yeah, toxic.
Haven't. We definitely oppose it. But I, I mean, I'd be open to hearing more about like how bad it is. I know that like they can definitely, definitely leak and can cause can be dangerous when there's accidents. But we haven't done much work on that.
Yeah, let's do that one. Very scary. I mean, there's like many points where they come through our city. And we, you know, we all call them bomb trains and it would be really a huge disaster.
Forty-four days, six acts, great crossings. All kinds of terrible stuff, including oil, including, you know, sand and oil, including all kinds of terrible stuff like, like, what was it, Palatine was the place on Ohio that happened. Just as long. And that makes me a lot.
You have affordable housing right next to the one in the city.
I know. Yeah, it's a scary thing.
Well, thank you, Melissa.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so we are on now to the last item for the night, which will be revisiting Resolution 157 of 2025. This was the resolution opposing the harmful impacts of the Big Beautiful Bill that has been returned to committee to be revamped. And so we have a couple of proposals that had been sent in, some edits, and I will let you discuss what you sent in. Thank you. Okay. And so maybe copies, those were in the emails today.
So you should all have a copy of the revised draft, the opposition. And I'm gonna say this one time, Big Beautiful Bill. It's just HR. Trouble's made, so otherwise known as HR1. Sarah, so I distributed that earlier, I think it was yesterday. And Sarah took a look at it and made, I think, some minor but important changes. Do I need to read the whole thing or I need to be the whole thing? Okay. Whereas, okay, memorializing resolution opposing the harmful impacts of Public Law Number 119-21, which was signed on July 4th, 2025, and recommending actions to be taken by New York State. Whereas the HR1 passed by the 119 Congress, 2025, 2026, is signed into law on July 4th as Public Law 119-21. It's an omnibus measure that bundles numerous unrelated provisions into a single vote, limiting accountability and obscuring real world impacts on working families. And whereas one of the stated purposes of this memorializing resolution is to quote, quote, educate the public, close quote, about the significant impact of the resultant finding funding shortfalls across New York State's municipalities, in which municipalities like the City of Kingston and counties like Ulster will be expected to absorb increased costs for critical, the increased costs for critical services, housing, infrastructure, and social, and I want to say here, and human and social program, human services and social programs, previously supported by federal funding that without targeted state intervention will force municipalities to either reduce services or raise local taxes. And whereas the cumulative effect of these provisions shifts burdens onto local governments, working families, veterans, seniors, children, small businesses, hospitals, and farmers, while disproportionately benefiting the ultra wealthy, contrary to the goal of lowering costs for working families. And whereas nonpartisan and sector analysis find that the law would significantly reduce federal support for health coverage, leaving about 1.5 million New Yorkers uninsured, while producing multi-billion dollar losses for hospitals and community providers, including destabilization of New York's Essential Plan Low-Cost Health Insurance Program. And whereas the legislation weakens nutrition security by cutting the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, and shifting major costs to states and local governments, affecting an estimated 300,000 New York households. And whereas Ulster County Comptroller March Gallagher reports that Ulster County has over 17,000, approximately 10% of its residents reliant on SNAP, and over 48,000, approximately 27% of its residents on Medicaid. And whereas in New York State, approximately 55,94 veterans reside in households receiving SNAP benefits. And here it says USDA data 2018 to 2019, I've updated that with a footnote that references a website that is actually more of today. So I will, it's not here, but it's on my, I'm suggesting that that be incorporated. And beginning in 2026, these veterans will face strict new work requirement conditions that jeopardize their access to food assistance. And whereas the New York State, whereas New York State's economy is one of the largest in the world with a gross state product of approximately $2.3 trillion in 2024, ranking third among US states and eighth globally if considered a nation, demonstrating both the capacity and responsibility of the state to protect its municipalities and residents from the harmful effects of federal policy. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston, New York, finds the impacts of HR1 deeply harmful to the health, prosperity, and well-being of its constituents, and hereby opposes its provisions. And be it further resolved that the City of Kingston urges the New York State Government and Legislature to adopt the following measures to protect municipalities and their residents. And these, this is a list of the recommended state actions. So the recommended state actions would be, one, expand direct state aid. Increase aid and incentives for municipalities, which is referred to as AIM. Funding to backfill lost federal dollars. Create a temporary municipal stabilization fund to provide emergency bridge grants to impacted localities. Two, replace or backfill federal programs. Have state agencies absorb or co-fund federally cut programs, housing, health, and education to prevent service disruptions. Establish pass-through block grants that mirror lost federal aid streams. Financing and bond support. Reactivate or expand a state municipal bond bank to lower borrowing costs. Provide state loan guarantees for essential infrastructure or social service projects affected by federal cuts. Four, mandate and regulatorily temporarily waive or defer state mandates that increase local costs. Offer municipalities greater flexibility in using existing state funds. Five, incentivize cost-saving partnerships. Expand shared services and consolidation grants to help municipalities pool resources and reduce overhead. Six, protect vulnerable communities. Prioritize aid for municipalities with high concentrations of low and middle income residents who are most affected by federal funding. Pay our fiscal support with technical assistance to ensure smaller municipalities can access relief efficiently. New York State must act swiftly to stabilize its municipalities by increasing aid, providing bridge financing, and temporarily lifting federal fiscal constraints. The state can protect local services, prevent regressive tax increases, and uphold its commitment to communities left vulnerable by federal policy changes. Resolve that the city clerk shall transmit copies of this resolution to U.S. Representatives, Pat Ryan, Josh Riley, Senator Charles Schumer, Senator Christian Gillibrand, and other appropriate federal and state officials.
It's a lot of reading.
That was the first part, right?
All right, so I'm just gonna start. So I thank you for working on this. I, we don't have language in there. thank you for working on this. I, we don't have language in there that still is asking for the federal government to fix this. So it's like putting back the onus just now on New York.
So my question would be, do you think, what are the chances of the federal government fixing this? This is, that ship is sailed. This, if we really wanted to have issued this memorializing resolution, it should have been done before the vote. Right now, this is the state of things, and I think that we need to rely on ourselves. I think we have the resources. I, I don't. I, I think that the, the, the federal government is not only unwilling, but is, is, has their heels dug in, they will not be coming to our.
Do you know how much money is, will be a hole for the state just based on the insurance and Medicaid? And the SNAP?
I do not, and I'm not proposing that they fully fund it. I'm saying that they concentrate on those municipalities that have the most need.
But most of that is, it's not necessarily municipalities, it's counties.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, like, just between two billion New Yorkers losing current insurance coverage, SNAP benefits, that's combined fiscal impact for New York is fourteen million annually. Our New York State's not gonna be able to find that money.
Presuming that we continue to pay our federal taxes.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I don't, we, like, I just feel like there needs to be more language that either calls on the state to maybe not send tax money, or for the state to increase taxes on the wealthy, because this, a few years ago, we couldn't make up a six billion.
That's a different resolution. I, 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 I get what you're saying. And all of that can't be in this.
All right.
Um, I, I would be more than thrilled to craft a resolution that talked about, that would talk about how um, New York State could fund it, but first I want to know if they're positioned to do anything, if they recognize their responsibility at this point.
There. We haven't, I, I, I work for Medicaid, like, mental health. We're having, um, I got a letter today from, uh, New York State Office of Mental Health that they're going to be rolling out meetings for us next month to explain more. So. We don't know. We don't know. I just think that if we're gonna get this technical about what the state should do, we could also say ways that we can raise revenue.
If we're gonna get this, what they can do.
Their recommended state actions. I mean, these go pretty deep in the weeds. So, I mean, I don't even know that, like, I know everything about each of these, that I would even be comfortable signing off about deferring all temporary waiting or defer state mandates that increase local costs, because we could actually be then well, that's great, it could be in, in opposition of.
Right, well, that's why I put forward discussion, so um, I don't expect that all of these will be included. But I would, we'd love to have some discussion about what could.
I'm gonna say too, the point of a memorializing resolution is to raise issues, not to, um, propose legislation. And so what this does is offer guidance, if you will, to our state, uh, our statewide representatives. And it, it's not about trying to second guess what the possibilities are of actually enacting, but it's to say, uh, to clarify that as far as we're concerned, we're in an extreme emergency at the moment. We understand that we could address the federal government directly, but we feel that the federal government is not going to be listening to us. And we have ample evidence for that right now. We are then, through this resolution, we'd be saying to the state, you need to take extraordinary measures. We can't, we can't keep playing a game as we have been in the past. And it would be up to them to make those decisions, but I carry through. And these just then are offering suggestions. So I, I think in, in that sense, that this is, um, this does what I was concerned, which is it takes the critique and turns it into uh, a kind of positive program of saying, here's things that we need to consider doing because of the situation.
Jake.
I really, I really like this one, um, point for that simple fact is that we're giving them, like Ren just said, we're giving them the positive. Uh, this is what's, what we need. We need you to step up as representatives, instead of going right to the federal government because the blue, um, the blue side and taking money from us. And we're in New York, and we know how much he hates New York. That I think we're just gonna be raising, shuffling the feathers a little bit. So this way, let, let the state do it. But then we could always come back if we don't see any action within the next few months, or any answers coming back, or something of that sort. Then we could go ahead, maybe a little harsher, but I don't think we should jump right in so harsh, first thing. I know we need to do something, but like Terrell said, that ship, that ship is sailed.
What's harsh? I'm sorry. Can you clarify what was harsh?
But in the resolution, because you're sending it right to the federal government.
Oh, the, the original.
Yeah, the original.
This one's going in as well.
Right, but it's a little, I, I'm gonna say, no, this one's going to the state. Schumer and all that, to incorrect.
I, I.
Schumer.
Our congressional representatives.
Which I think we shouldn't bypass them anyway, give them an opportunity to, um, go to the table. We're letting them know how serious things are, and they're gonna get really bad in Kingston. I mean, myself with Social Security, Medicaid, and everything. You know, I don't, I don't know what, what's gonna happen. You know, I'm scared myself. And I have every right to be. And as Sarah probably is, Bob is, and, you know, like, we have mortgage payments, we have bills also.
Yeah, we have all that.
Okay, too.
Um, going past sixty-seven and, you know, most of us worked very hard all our life, and I think that we should give New York State a chance to respond. I, that's the way I feel. I know that we have to do something. I feel very strong. We do have to do something. But I don't think we have to go right there and bypass that and give them an opportunity, say, well, Kingston's gonna be hurting too. And they know Kingston. You really think that, uh, Mr. Trump really, yeah, he got Kingston, New York? He's seeing New York on there, he's gonna get him in a rage. But I, I know we have to do something. And I feel very, very confident, be true to.
The resolution is still, um, is a memorializing resolution opposing the harmful impacts of public law number one nineteen twenty-one, which is the name of that bill, and recommending actions to be taken by New York State. So we still are mentioning that.
We are, but we're doing it to our, our, you know, our.
Just to the state.
Yeah, to the state. We're not sending it right to federal. And I, I'm not gonna disrespect, even though I might not care for the person, I'm not gonna disrespect them and say that law, the big beautiful bill, that's what he needed, that's what it is, we're all Americans, and we should be like. I'm not gonna disrespect it. Do I agree with it? No, not at all. I am so far from that. Um, but, you know, a seat is a seat. And we were all voted in, and so is he. And don't forget, couldn't have won if there wasn't a lot of blue people going out there and voting for him. That's fact.
Yeah, I will just echo what Brenna said. I think, yeah, I also think you did a great job in sort of bringing in a lot of the points that were in the first memorializing resolution, but I really do like the suggestions of what we would like the state to consider, which is essentially what we're saying. Where we don't know how they're gonna do it, but that's for them, that's for them to figure out. They have funds. Maybe, maybe they won't do it. But these are just suggestions for things that they might be able to do, or should at least consider.
Anyone else?
Well, even if we included the part about the federal government, I think the state part is more important, because you're right, the federal government is mostly in the wind, they're not gonna do anything, they can't.
They've already caused.
They can't even keep the government open.
It's almost embarrassing to ask them, because it's.
Well, it's not even asking them, it's just sending a message that we're opposed to this.
I'm, well, that's what I know, but the original one. Okay, so. What does the original one say? I guess that's.
Yes, the original, yeah, the original one was urging Congress to take action.
Yeah, it was resolved, we want Congress to do all this stuff.
Right, and, and what are they gonna do?
Right.
Can we just go through that? I want you to do four things, understanding and let go.
We, we're asking them to do something that they've already done. All, all of the Democrats stood against this. And so we're asking them to go back and say, we're still against it?
Right, right.
And then it just. And then, and the other, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that in this resolution, I took out the citations for the reasons that I gave, because they, they, there, there were no embedded, um, references to those citations, so it just didn't make sense to have. Right?
Sure.
So, uh, the, because we sent it back from committee, in essence, this would be an amendment to the previous one, right? So we need a motion to amend the previous one with the substitution of this, right?
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion, then, that be substitute prior resolution with the one that Terrell read to us here tonight. I'll second that, substitute or.
Yeah, it's the other way around.
You wanna replace, anyway, right? Okay. Places your syllables and to, uh, I almost spoke.
So an amendment of Resolution one fifty-seven of two twenty-five. To.
Um, can I make those changes, though, in terms of the U S, the reference to USDA data two thousand eighteen? Can I send those in after this?
You didn't read that. I mean, you said it, you read it.
Yeah.
Right, that's just, right, but it's not.
And that would be what we call a sign of correction. Just don't put any requests for money for Ward five.
You went to Ward four.
Um, anything else? All right, so this is just an amendment of Resolution one fifty-seven of twenty twenty-five to place uh, with a new version by Terrell McGinn.
So it's to replace the previous version, right?
Yes, of Resolution one fifty-seven of twenty twenty-five, okay. Um, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. Opposed? Aye. Right. I'm just opposed because it's just I don't see how this takes. The original argument against the first resolution was its putting a target on her back, right?
There were several.
So, can I finish? Thank you. So it put a target on her back, it put a target on her back for brown Hispanic population.
Black and brown people.
Black and brown people, thank you, and, um, there was no mention of that in that resolution, or anything of this sort, so. I just still think that we should be calling on Congress to do something, and so that's just why I'm opposed to.
See, I was convinced at the public hearing by those that came on, said ask us to do something, instead of, you know, but I was influenced by their, by their discussion of all.
Can you say something?
Sure.
Mr. Trump is, as I'm talking on the black and brown people, and as people of white privilege, we don't understand a lot what really goes on, no matter how educated you are, if you're not living it, we're never gonna understand it. Okay, and the thing is, is that black and brown people can speak for themselves, but they can't come to meetings, they can't do quite a bit. And to say it's not in there, our, our New York State Dems are trying to get the target off the black and brown people. And if you notice that every one of our council meetings, there's two black people that are on the actual council, next year there will be one. In the meetings themselves, and I've been watching since day one, it is horrible that black and brown people cannot come into their city building and voice their opinion. So you think going after Mr. Trump when they're definitely afraid to go to work, to school, to come here, and to do things that we will never see? It, it, it's craziness. So for us to go straight to them, we will never understand as white people what the persecution is on them, the black and brown people. And I have a high regard of hearing the voices, because I go out and I speak, I live it. Um, I have a black child that I give birth to. I have a black husband. We are a mixed family, American Indian, Irish, Scottish. We're totally mixed, my whole clan. And here are these things for years and years, and everybody's going after, you know, him as a president. But like I said before, his cabinet's almost all white, he's demolishing the black and brown people out of this country. And we don't need to join up with anything that he's proposing. So that's why I stand strong on this, that we must do something, but we should have done it before. We should have, you know, I love the no kings rallies, I, I love all these things, because that gives us power. But we still don't have an amount of black and brown people that should be speaking out. And it offends me as a Democrat and as a Kingstonian and as a human being that we're missing it. And it really just, I, I just wanted to put this out here, that, you know, I can feel for Terrell, I can feel for Joe, I can feel for my brothers and sisters of different colors. Because really, we're all just human beings. I don't want a target on their back. And it is being put a target on their back. We're doing it really nicely, and everybody's behaving themselves, but I'm gonna be honest with you. We're putting a straight target on their back for him to do more to the black and brown people by us just sending something like this. It's a wonderful thing we're doing, I agree with it. But I also, let's, let's go up the chain of command first. That's just how I feel.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just looking to close this resolution, so thank you. Thank you for saying that, Jean. And I also want to say that I think what I liked about this resolution is that it focuses on the economic impact, which is really, which is really what's going to decimate our communities. And it talks about, and is suggesting to the state how they might be able to help, because we are lucky, we live in a state that actually has the resources
Yes.
of its, of its own. But, yeah, the economic impact is just gonna be terrible.
And to your point, Michelle, about, um, you know, uh, the effect, the possible impact on black and brown folks, and that you don't see that necessarily reflected in this, is, there is a subtle difference in asking our congresspeople to, in effect, beg on our behalf and try to get some sort of change, some sort of shift in mind from this administration, which is what I believe the first resolution, memorial, right, memorializing resolution would have us do. And that in and of itself felt to me like that was going to put a target, because now you're, you're not looking at yourself. Cause now you're, you're not looking at yourself to solve the issue, which who can blame you for that? Now you're asking again, the administration that already said no. You, you want to send the troops back in just to have them say no again?
I honestly am not following your logic. It's. It was a, a, a real resolution.
Mm-hmm.
That spoke on the economic factors regarding healthcare and food. It did not speak on anything other than that. So.
Well, I mean, yeah, a discussion should have happened before the vote.
Yeah, so, alright. I, I just was explaining why I believe that's off, like, I had the right to do that as a point of order. So I'm just writing up the resolution, so. Uh, make part one. Me. It broke who cared or we did not. The first draft that went out earlier this morning, it's different. Are you looking for the original one? Of public, okay, now, now I just found yours, no. That's the one Cyrus on, it's completely different than that. No, yeah, it's, it's now a memorializing resolution opposing the harmful impacts of public law and recommending actions to be taken by New York State.
But yeah, these are the ones. Yes. Can you believe it?
Okay, um, memorializing resolution opposing the harmful impacts of public law number one nineteen twenty-one, seven over twenty-five and recommending actions to be taken by New York State. Can I get a motion?
Do you agree?
No, that was to make an amendment, the motion for amendment.
Oh, I thought it was already, I'm sure.
I'll say. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Do I hear?
You should have any of these. Oh, it's still here, yeah.
Alright, and then you'll send that in, uh, the minutes.
I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Motion, during second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, and Terrell, you'll send that to me in one.
I certainly will.
Thank you. Thank you so much.